Welcome the ACES committing to our work session this evening. We have an opportunity each year to meet with our committee commissioners and this is ACES' chairman. So appreciate that opportunity and we're excited to hear about what you've got going on. Let's take a moment and just do a brief round of introductions for the ACES team who doesn't can't agree. Austin Mayer.
Mark ACES, Mayor of Rosanna.
Kevin Ryan, trustee.
Sandy Hamerly, trustee.
Neil Shaw, trustee.
Hamerly, trustee.
Laura Skwinski, trustee.
Pat Anglino, manager.
Michelle Horden.
Mike Kencha, also on ACES.
Caitlin Stafford, on vice chair of ACES.
Jim Zariski, ACES member.
All right. Jim.
Actually, I lead. Am I leading? You're the vice chair. I delegate it to her.
Yeah, well, so we had a couple of topics tonight. Mike is going to talk about the scorecard that everybody received and we have paper copies as well. And then the other topic was Excel Energy's partners in the energy program. Mike and I both missed the last meeting, so we'll rely on Michelle and Jim for some input on that. So do you want to start with scorecard explanation?
Sure, yeah. So I think everyone has a printout in front of them what this is. You know, our aspiration here to create a relatively simple scorecard of metrics to track our performance in terms of sustainability. So I believe over there on the town board goals still support environmental sustainability. And, you know, our realization is that that's not necessarily very well defined in the existing town, town goals. It's good in spirit, but not entirely clear. And so we've set out to define and measure what we think some of those, some of those metrics are that can, that can tell us how we're doing on those things. So I'd like to talk through the details of what's in here, but just generally our, our goal is to be able to track on a yearly basis how we're doing against a handful of important, important metrics. We could use this over time to set, set goals. The town doesn't have very many specific formal goals around these topics, but we could set goals. We can benchmark against other communities. We've collaborated some with Boulder County. It's possible that if we, if we as a town adopt this, then we can work with other communities to create some standard metrics that would go around the county and we could see, everybody could track their progress together.
I just wanted to add quickly, he wasn't aware since he was at the last meeting, but we found out that pretty much every community around us is doing this area yet and everything. So I just wanted to add that. That was concerning.
Okay, great. Yeah, so today I'd like to share with you, I'd just like to get your feedback. I think my insight would be that if we get some feedback from you today, we go back and maybe make some changes, consult again with the county. And then at a future date, we would come with something more finalized that we would hope to get a more formal endorsement from the board to, to adopt and put on the website and, you know, publish or put out at public events and get community, make it transparent to the community. So with that, I'll, I'll just go through, maybe I'll go through kind of quickly what's in here and then if you have questions, I'm happy to respond to them. So we've got six categories on here, the first being climate. So we're just, we're just tracking the total carbon emissions, greenhouse gas emissions attributed to Superior. This is from the Boulder County greenhouse gas inventory. There's only one year of data because prior studies use a different methodology, so we don't quite have a year-over-year tracking yet, but here's our, we can see our number here. Leah Yancy from the County Office of Sustainability has offered to come to a future board meeting and go over that in more, in more depth in terms of breaking it down, if that's of interest to the board. We have a few energy metrics, our percent renewable, so we're kind of hovering around 31% for comparison that, you know, most of this is based on what Excel delivers to the, to the town, which is around 28%. We have a little bit proportionally higher participation in the renewable energy programs and rooftop solar here in the town than Excel does elsewhere, so our number is a little bit higher than the Excel average, but not by much. In terms of energy efficiency, the next two are how much energy we use and how much energy in terms of electricity and gas. We're slightly higher than the Boulder County average. The year-over-year trends can be misleading. A lot of times it's dependent on weather, one year and the next, but we see a slight decrease in the two years for which we have data so far. On the second page, we have, we have water use. Our goal would be to be efficient with our residential water use. We are quite a bit lower than the county average in Boulder, so we hope to see that trend continue. We have two air quality metrics here. These are not measured within the town of Superior. They're measured by the, at the state's monitoring sites for ozone that's located in Rocky Clas and for particulate matter, it's located in Boulder. The key thing to note here is for ozone, Superior, this, the region rather, has been for years in, in violation essentially of, of the EPA air quality standard. Particulate matter, we're, we're well under that standard, but really going back here, we, we go back seven or eight years, been pretty consistently in violation of that standard and not, not really seeing a clear trend of improvement. So that's one, one to flag for, for folks. Mitigating ozone, we can talk about more, it wouldn't, you know, Superior could contribute to that locally, but it also is a regional, very much a regional issue and not only a town-specific issue. The other things we've included, electric vehicles, we would like to encourage more adoption. The county has just, the county D M B has just started tracking this data point and it's not yet available, but later this year we'll be able to track how Superior compares to other communities on, on electric vehicle registrations. And then on waste diversion, I see Lisa's not here, who's our subject matter expert, but in terms of waste diversion from landfill, we're, we're kind of well behind some of our peer communities, hovering around 25% for years. This is what portion of total waste goes primarily to recycling but or to compost. So we're a bit behind there. And then this new, new metric, which has just been measured, percent recoverables remaining, which is a measure of basically of everything that goes to the landfill, how much of that could have gone somewhere else, you know, some things that could have been recycled that people just threw in the trash. So it's about 18%, so we try to get that number down over time and we have, I believe we'll be, we'll be measuring that again later this year.
Will we have that data point measured against other communities?
We may be able to get that. I don't, I don't have that now, but it'll be something for us to chat with.
And that was one of the hopes is creating a more standardized format across our neighboring communities so that the Superior scorecard is measuring things in the same way as Lewis, Villenopia and Ireland and so that we can see how are we all doing on the same metrics with the same data points. So I think that would be the goal in what we've talked about with Boulder County.
Yeah, and that's, that's a good point because we're not sure what they're doing and this is, the reason we have that number is because we spent some of our grant money on getting a trash sort done specifically to get this information about our community.
Okay, so this is from Superior?
Yes.
Okay. And how many?
But it was just a regional town, was it not? Rock Creek did not participate.
Yeah, because of the different trash contracts, I believe that was part of.
I can't remember how many homes that you brought that.
That was, that was my question was.
Thank you, Karen.
Right, so trash, they don't, they don't sample it, I believe, pressing for my, they don't sample it by home, by household.
It's like the truck.
Get the truck, which has gone to all 500 and some homes.
And then they went.
Sample it from in there.
And to be like, this was truly trash, this was truly, it could have been.
Got it, okay.
They got to them.
It's true, jobs true.
So I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
So this is really interesting, so thank you for doing this and I'm really looking forward to seeing over time, you know, to see to what extent you can visualize trends going in the right, right direction and things that aren't going to be necessarily attributable to just fluctuations in the weather of the year, but a couple of questions on the renewable energy percentage of total electricity. Is this just taking into account people that have solar panels on their roofs or does this also take into account, I forget the name of the program, but there's a program that you can participate in through Excel where you can basically buy your electricity and it's, you know, they're carbon neutral, electricity is coming from solar farms and wind?
Yeah, that's right. Yes, there's three different.
It's called the wind source program?
Yeah, there's, well, there's three different things that get factored in, so one is, there's three that are factored in currently and one we could try to add maybe with more data. So one is rooftop solar for customers that are signed up with the Excel program for that, but the data all comes from Excel. The second is wind source, which is an optional program, anyone, any Excel customer can sign up for to buy their energy all from wind, pay a slight premium to Excel for that. The third is called Renewable Connect, which is a new program from Excel, which I believe is fully subscribed. I don't think they're taking new customers, but that's, it's the same kind of thing, but from a solar, it's a specific solar farm they've built out east Colorado somewhere and you can buy the energy from that, from that facility. So among those three programs, the participation is folded into here. There, there are probably a subset of homes that are, that have rooftop solar panels but are not participating in the Excel program. Right now, we're not capturing them in the data set. We, we may seek that data, actually, if anyone here knows if there's good town permit data that might help us to count the number of solar panels or something like that, that might be able to, to build that in.
For a number of years, we can.
Okay, yeah, so we can build that in, but so far this is, this is through all the three Excel programs.
Does, does it also include, for example, the summit at Rock Creek brought, bought into, I can't remember the name of it, but it's a solar farm that's out off Marshall Road. Does it include them?
I'm not sure about that one.
I mean, because they spent about $50,000 to buy in and buy those solar panels, so I don't know, that would be, I know they get Excel rebates.
Yeah, we have to check into that because we're not sure what their, their status is.
Because we, they were limited, they could not put solar panels on the roofs of the units and we didn't have enough space on the top of clubhouse, so we bought into, I want to say it's like Clean Energy Collective or something, I can't remember exactly what it was.
Oh, yeah, that one, that one may go through, yeah, there is, I said there were three Excel programs, there is a fourth one and that one may go through that.
Okay.
We could validate that.
Yeah.
Maybe it's a community solar is, is what that category or project is.
Yeah, I just wanted to make sure that that was included in your numbers too, I thought about that.
Yeah, there's a good chance it is, but we'd have to go validate it, yeah.
On, on the ozone and the particulate matter categories, do we have an idea as to, you know, how much of that could actually be, you know, affected by changes in behavior here on a local level versus things that are kind of outside of our control? You know, oil and gas operations in Weld County and the wind kind of backing it up against the mountains and then sitting over Boulder County? Do you have an idea as to like, you know, what is really the kind of the cause of those?
I can, I can share what I know, but I would, if this is of interest to the, to the town, to you all, I would recommend bringing, inviting someone from the county or the state to come talk about it in more detail. My, my understanding from doing a little bit of research is that it's, the two primary causes are, are oil and gas extraction operations and transportation fuels, cars and trucks and airplanes. So certainly we, here locally, we could try to encourage less driving, more shared driving, more electric driving, things like this, but I don't, I don't have a good sense for what proportion is outside the town versus inside the town.
That's one of the things we talked about as kind of an action item coming out of it is because it is measured at a regional level, not local, if we wanted to see local measurements and how that can change over time, there are measuring stations that we could use our grant money in a future year or something like that towards getting a more localized measurement of that to see what is the reading in Superior versus the regional reading.
Yeah, that's true. There is kind of a new generation of lower cost air quality monitoring devices that, that could be, could be carried and placed around Superior and we could, we could test it at more local.
Metro Mayor's caucus had a recent presentation by Regional Air Quality Council on this very topic and we are, Superior is a participant or member of that and so they might have some resources here because it was, it was a very informative presentation and, you know, it's, it's truly a regional issue. I, I think that, yeah, individually we could be doing things, but it's all kind of to a common goal for the whole region. I think there's a, there's definitely some geographical things that are just the layout of the land and the mountains next to it and the temperature and the weather and all of those things kind of, they all compare to create a problem, but nonetheless, there's this national standard that we are in excess of and need to, need to work towards. But that, they might be able to resource both to your group, but also if we wanted to have a presentation, I think that could be useful as well, just educational and what can people can use.
Who was that?
Regional Air Quality Council and I, I can connect you with, if you want to, if you need connections to specific people, I can get that.
So what are, what are Louisville and Boulder doing that we're not doing on waste diversion? Why, why are the numbers so, is it, is it all composting?
I think there is a lot of that, that they do have curbside composting year-round on a more regular schedule. That's certainly helpful.
Well, Louisville's is built into their trash, everybody has it.
Yeah.
So.
Can we, can we let their numbers go back before they started composting?
We did reach out to those committees and ask them.
No.
Well, that's why we're doing this waste sort activity.
Yeah.
Is to build the data to go to that or to, to decide how we want to go forward with composting and seeing if the HOA can adopt that and so forth. Because right now, there's a tough mentality on that and you got to pay for it out of pocket or you got to somehow truck your stuff to the composting facility, which a lot of us don't have pickup trucks and don't want grass clippings all over the back of our trunks. And, yeah, a lot of these communities are offering curbside composting, so we think that's a big factor.
Yeah.
Right here, so we need the data, the support and recommendations to you on how the town should adopt.
Yeah, I mean, I use a composting thing in the summer and I swear to God, if only you could put a trash can out every four months, you'd not be going in.
Yeah. And that's, you know, so I think compost is a big part of it. The other thing we've heard feedback on is the, there's confusion around what can you recycle and what you can't recycle, different guidelines for original town and the HOA. So some conflicting, like the HOA says put your recycling into plastic bags so that we don't have wind-blown trash, but the recycling facility says that messes things up and we don't want that to happen. So we've got different messaging going out, which just creates some noise.
Do we have any data on, for the stuff that is recycled, how much of it is just trash because it's mixed in with plastic bags or is it actually non-recyclable? You know, how much of the stuff in the recycling bin actually ends up in the landfill?
Yeah.
Or is that, is that included in the 24%?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure about that number.
I do know in general, we don't necessarily know those numbers because they consorted, but like at, at the recycling facility, they might have even more that's trash.
Yeah, the 24% is what was the weight in the recycling truck versus the weight in the trash truck.
Could actually get lower.
Yeah.
It could, yeah, because dirty recycling is a big problem right now.
So I think this is great and as a rule, things that you measure, you improve on right? So it's great to start with the baseline and some of the numbers don't look awesome, but it's all right. We'll start with baseline and look to improve.
It'll go up.
We're doing.
True.
I mean, I bent that down in a, in energy use. I'd like to, to, I don't know if the dialogue now, or maybe it's a dialogue for you, to think about some, some other measures that households can work on to have, that may impact some usage. And they may not be things that you could easily report on using source data, but things like, maybe it's an annual survey, do you have a programmable thermostat in your house? Approximately how many days do your, per week do your kids either walk or ride their bikes to school? And start doing some softer measures that we could begin to track over time. And I think that will be, and I, and we won't be able to compare ourselves to other communities on some of these soft measures because the data won't be sourced in the same way, but I think that does allow for more of a conversation in the home instead of trying to explain, hey, I'm, to your eight-year-old who, you know, won't understand 2.5 to 2.10, you know, so.
And I think that, you know, that's, the goal of the scorecard is to then have some action items. So where you want to reduce residential water use, there was a suggestion on the committee of do we have voluntary water restrictions of even numbered addresses, water on these days and not due these days? So are there some things that we can take this town-level data and then be able to say, here's how we can all make an impact on it? And next year, we're going to come back with our next number and see did we, as a community, could actually improve that? So I think having those actionable takeaways from this is going to be important for it to make a difference.
I, Kevin, I got a couple of questions about the residential electric and gas usage. I think, like everyone said, I love data, this is fantastic. And one of my questions, because I'm a nerd and I've been tracking my gas and electric for the last five, 10 years, whatever, one of the issues which we're always going to have is, you know, what is our energy uses per square foot? I mean, how does that compare to Boulder County? We've got bigger homes, not just square foot wise, but volume-wise, and I think on the gas side, you know, it's definitely more expensive to heat, you know, a big giant house, but, you know, I don't, that's not an excuse, but it's something, you know, just to kind of keep in mind as we try to strive for improvement, there might be a threshold or an asymptotic approach where we just can't get below because of the volume of the homes.
I think that's actually a really interesting comment. I mean, just knowing what we've worked on before, there's some truth to that and there's some non-truth to that.
Yeah.
Just because in the very general sense, it's actually sometimes more expensive to heat a smaller inefficient house compared to bigger.
True.
Houses had all the improvements, so we could even look at doing things like that, like doing like a tale of two homes in Superior, like one home that hasn't been upgraded and one that has and the difference. I mean, I know my personal experience, we doubled the size of our house and our energy bills didn't go up because of the things that we did to the new house. So it's kind of interesting, but people don't think of what really can save you.
And I think that, that sort of anecdote is, is powerful because a lot of people might look at it as like, eh, it doesn't matter, my house today. But the anecdotes, because, you know, you throw in actual insulation on top of the house, it's going to improve dramatically, triple gate windows, again, all there's so many things you can do to make your large volumetric house more energy efficient than you said. And I think having all that kind of characterized really makes it more powerful.
Okay.
So to echo a little bit of what Kevin said, first of all, I think this is fantastic and I really love especially comparing Superior to the rest of Boulder County, to neighboring municipalities. I think for me, especially the greenhouse gas emissions, that one is tough because I look at it and my initial reaction is wow, 110,000 tons, that, good, bad, otherwise hard to say. So I think whenever we can anchor it in these other municipalities, that really helps. And, and again, to echo what Kevin had said, I think making this as actionable as possible is really important. I would love to see if we could maybe, maybe in our Superior Sentinel, every month, publish one of these statistics along with one really small action that people can take. So maybe for ozone, it's try one day a week, walking your kids to school instead of driving them. Or something that just feels really approachable for people to do could be neat to kind of make it a little bit of a challenge in that way of, let's make June the month we do this and see if we can beat Louisville by doing it or whatever.
It's actually fun.
Well, I mean, that's the goal, make it a little bit fun versus I think people have a tendency to, with any sort of climate change things, think, oh, it's boring stuff, it's way in the future, it's taking away the things I like to do now, rather than making it, no, it's, it's little steps that get you there.
I don't want to say anything new. I've had the, the benefit of watching all this for the past several months, so you guys already know what I think. I think the one thing I would say is I'm looking forward to the action items and especially on the, the waste diversion, knowing that other cities are doing it better and we're looking for us to improve, so that's, that's certainly one of the pieces I'm looking forward to.
So I had the opportunity to go to DC with the Metro Mayor's caucus and Craig Nager from Excel was on that trip and so we were talking and I, I just asked him, you know, what, what are the kind of the low-hanging fruit in terms of becoming more sustainable, the things that everybody could do that would really make a big difference? One of the things that he was pushing for was that Renewable Connect program that I guess now is that capacity, because that's, you know, one way you're dedicating your, your energy from renewable sources. The other one that he was saying is that Excel has energy audit programs that you can sign up for and there's like a pretty low nominal fee, like $50 or something like that for Excel to come out and they will go through your house, tell you all your windows that are drafty and this is the insulation that you have in your attic that you could really improve on and it did that, you know, in terms of dollar for dollar, you know, bang for your buck that you're going to get, having Excel come out there and do the energy audit, he said is something that everybody should do because it'll pay for itself immediately in terms of the changes. And he said, you also get, depending on the light bulbs that you already have in your house, they'll come out and they'll swap all the light bulbs out to LEDs and so it's, it's something that a lot of people don't know exists and, you know, maybe it's something that we want to put in like the next Sentinel, just to let people know that there is this program out there. I know we're going to slow the flow program right now with everybody turning on their sprinkler systems, but publicizing Excel's energy audits now that everybody's going to be cranking up air conditioning will be, I think, helpful for people to recognize that, okay, maybe I shouldn't be doing that, I should really put some better insulation in my attic and maybe change out some of the windows upstairs because they're not insulated well.
And I know in general, we've highlighted that program for years in our little corner and, yeah, participation rate hasn't really changed, like you said, and it's quite fascinating because it isn't expensive, but I don't know if people just don't care to scroll down or really think about it or they read it and then think I'll do it later and don't, I don't know. I mean, I think it'd just be interesting, kind of going back to her idea of like highlighting things. I mean, there's so many things that the town's trying to get across in each newsletter, but maybe if once every four months or once every three months, there is like something specific that you guys as the town council set to be like, we want our town to work on this, art and highlight the energy audits, maybe we'll pay attention because you talked about it in the meeting. I don't know. I mean, it's, it's tricky because they've all been there and why people don't take advantage of it, I don't know, because it is extremely low-cost, free in a lot of situations and the rebates that are available for things like programmable thermostats, you can get them for free right now from Excel.
Right.
Like a nice one. And it's just, it's kind of funny. Honey, you gotten something recently that?
Yeah, you can do it through Excel or through Boulder County. The Boulder County program is called Energy Smart, so I did that recently at my own home and it's, I think the cost was $185, which is still subsidized below the full cost, I'm not sure about.
That's the one we've promoted in the past, was the Boulder County program, was in the newsletter, and I think the 185 was maybe more than what.
Still enough that some, it turns some people, some folks off and it's, you know, maybe it's not grabbing enough people's attention, but it's, it's a good program. Good, good recommendations for the home.
Do you guys have any idea what the participation rate is in the Sabre Switch? I mean, again, it doesn't necessarily, I mean, it's free, you get 50 bucks a year back from Excel that it puts in there.
I think I've seen some data, it's pretty low, certainly less than 5%. I mean, that's maybe, you know, one or two, that's pretty typical honestly for these types of, these type of utility programs around the country, yeah.
Well, I think it is the awareness piece that like it's in the bottom corner of your power bill, but whoever looks at their power bill.
But, you know, it's still in terms of advocates, you know, the people in this room, even I'll be like, I've done the, I've done the whole energy audit, I've done the Sabre Switch, I got tons and tons of insulation in the attic and blah, blah, blah.
Yeah, Excel also has a program, I don't, is it still running, that they'll give you a programmable thermostat and come install it. The, that they'll give you a programmable thermostat and come install it.
And that's what we got.
And we did that, yeah.
And we have like cheaper rates at night.
Yeah.
So like my electric cars start charging after nine, because that's when my energy prices drop, so.
I think it is one of those things that is, it's like three extra steps for people to go to the website, decide which program they're going to do, you know, meet the contractor at their house, and so.
We do have Excel coming out though.
Yeah.
That's actually, we confirmed that at the last meeting. So Excel came to the meeting to talk about what community programs that they have offering. And we just kind of got a quick little snapshot, that they wanted to get an idea of what we were interested in talking about and hearing about, that they can basically deliver a community meeting and take care of everything for us, we just provide the location type of deal. And they can come and talk about these different programs that they have that can save people money and all the stuff, and it's offering. So Excel actually wants to help, probably enough to help people save money.
It's a billion-dollar power plant.
Yeah.
Well, and forgive me if we've already done this, but could we potentially get them at our 4th of July, at our Chili Fest and some, at one of those events with a booth saying, hey, here's some programs you can sign up for?
Good question. We didn't actually look at that.
Holidays might be a tough sell, but, you know, she's talking about.
Chili Fest, so maybe Chili Fest then. But I think that'd be really cool if there was a booth where people could just, there's all those booths, of course, but they come by your new windows, all of that. But if there's a booth that literally just says, hey, it's free, sign up for Sabre Switch. And I don't know, I'm, I believe your stat, I am shocked that it's at 5%. I thought everyone did that, I thought it's a no-brainer, so.
Well, and so that's the kind of second topic we'll get to is the Partners in Energy program. And Excel will do a lot of support and project management alongside us to help promote things that are important to our community. So, but we can stay on the scorecard until we're done with that.
One other idea might be some video testimonials for people, even our board. I've done the Energy Smart program myself and on several properties in Boulder, so I can speak to, speak to that, but this is a pretty video savvy group. Push it out to different channels and that way people can, you know, I think it's one thing to kind of read and expect action on things, but when somebody says, oh, there's a video, okay. Peaks in interest and tells a person a story, okay, I can relate to that. That might be it. Sure, the various ones on the board would be happy to help with that.
Yeah, that'd be great.
So how's the overall scorecard? Looking at you guys, saying we should take away, change the units on?
Format.
Format.
Just give the comments that you've been through.
Keep it as is.
Looking pretty good, yeah.
I mean, I get your air quality point, that's, Mark, that's something that's come up in our meetings too, is how much control we have over that, so.
I think my ideal for, sorry.
Go ahead.
I think my ideal would just be if there was like one, maybe like a bubble on the side of like, here's what you can do that does impact this, and I think that could be really neat, yeah.
And if there are, talking about the air quality and whatnot, if there are certain things that we don't necessarily have full control over, but we as a county could contribute more to, still bring that forward, I mean, we're part of the Metro Mayor's, Boulder County, the surrounding cities, we still have a voice, so anything that comes forward, it's something out there and we'll see where it goes. I think, go ahead.
I would expect, I mean, so there's, there's currently no, obviously oil and gas development has been a part of it, currently not ongoing here, but, but cars, trucks and gas-powered lawn equipment, landscaping equipment are a big part of that, so. And, and that portion of it, it's, you know, it's more like every community has to act in concert, so.
Yeah.
And we've got a part to play. There's absolutely action that could be taken to encourage less users switching to electric, including with lawn equipment, or even with the town, town contracts for landscaping, things like this. So there's, there's probably a long list of, you know, levers the town could pull at it, at the town level to, make a dent at least.
And you never know, us making one step in one direction could get another community to take that same step, so. These are those little pieces.
Yeah, that's right.
So I think it's, it's great and, you know, I'm looking forward to seeing it kind of build over time. In terms of like making, making an impact to address Michelle's point, you know, I think one, one of the problems is we have information overload and we're always just getting, oh, there's this program and then there's this program and there's, you know, a million things and a million different emails that we get each day and it's hard to kind of keep track of everything when we're trying to, you know, just go about our, our daily lives. One thing that I think, you know, could be helpful, and like, so we're also dealing with, there are people who are concerned about like their environmental impact and, you know, this is like the early adopters that are driving electric cars and putting on solar panels onto their houses. And then there are others who may not necessarily prioritize that as much, but they may be just thinking economically, like, you know, how am I wasting money? And, you know, as far as I'm concerned, you know, both are kind of, you know, valid ways of looking at things, but, you know, we can make our case to our residents, you know, if we put together some kind of centralized resource of, step one would be to, you know, contact Excel and get an energy audit. Step two would be, you know, if you're looking to, to actually make a meaningful impact on reducing your carbon footprint, or alternatively, or, you know, at the same time, you know, saving, you know, 20% on a monthly basis on your electrical, on, you know, water, water wells, you know, these are the things you can do, you know, start with an electric audit through Excel's program and here's the contact information for that. Swap out your lights to LEDs, get a loafer, get a toilet, so you're not flushing, you know, just gallons away, literally. Get the town's slow-the-flow program, analysis of your sprinklers, and just do it in a kind of a single area. And maybe, you know, maybe it's just hitting people at the right time because maybe what we're doing right now hasn't been working because people are just kind of used to periodically getting these reminders that, oh, yeah, I know that these, these programs would have not necessarily been top of mind. Whereas if we made it something that's like easy to digest in like one package, and we made a concerted effort, and it's a Laura's point of just kind of raising, okay, this month we're going to make it Sustainability Month, it's Earth Day today, so like, let's go out and see what we can do to save people some money, help reduce the carbon impact that everybody has. You know, maybe that would be helpful in terms of raising the awareness that otherwise historically has had the opportunity of just kind of getting ignored because people get inundated with too much information, so.
Along those lines, I'm wondering if we could come up with, like, almost a scorecard that individuals could use for their homes, where it's, you know, to Mark's point, if you do it sequentially, are you a Level 1 house or are you a Level 4 house? And check off the boxes to see which one you are. And that could be something I'm thinking even, school kids might get really interested in where they're like, oh, you know, mom, dad, come on, let's get this, let's get this inspection done so we can move up to the next level and gamify it a little bit. I know that's so trendy, but I think it's trendy for a reason, you know, people like that kind of stuff.
Well, the kids, the third graders all already do the recycling thing, so you could easily ask the schools to hopefully tie that all in together. Exactly. Kids have an idea. Kids love getting on their hands.
Yep, yeah.
Move on to transition to Partners in Energy. You want me to?
Just as a check-in, we need to be wrapping up 6:35 to 6:40. Absolutely. We've got to break down the table.
Yeah, I can talk about Partners in Energy, guys. We have a handout for our power points that we're going to bring up. All right, that's fine. Uh, so this should go quick. So I think the key word of this, this is free to the town, so, okay, we're done. Yeah, so Excel Energy offers this program called Partners in Energy. I'm, I'm looking at my notes from the last meeting. Currently, over 40 communities are participating in this program. It began in 2014. And, and basically what they do is they provide support on energy efficiency, they provide data, you know, they provide, provide resources, again, all this is free, to help the town with energy efficiency improvements, both at the commercial and residential level. And so currently, there's, you know, towns around us that are participating in Erie, Louisville and Nederland. And, and, you know, one of the things that can help feed into this scorecard is that the town, or is that Excel can actually provide data to feed directly into the scorecard. So some of your questions that you guys have, reguables, percent PV on rooftops, probably participation in these three or four programs that you guys asked about, we can get all that through Excel, through this program. And we can even, you know, in terms of neighborhood competitions, you know, we have different neighborhoods around town, Excel said they could actually take the data from, as long as we get, I think it was like, 15 homes, so no one can tell what neighborhood it is. They can give us data at, at the, at the neighborhood level. And so we could kind of break this down even further and have a pie chart of, of things broken down by commercial, residential, I know we don't really have any industrial in town. And, and basically it's just a program there to, to help conserve energy. I mean, that's, that's kind of it in a nutshell. And they said applications are due by July, take about six months of ramp up to get this program going. They said they could also provide resources on energy audits. And I think with this program, we could probably breathe some life into the marketing that you guys all asked about with our residential energy audits and so forth and the benefits of that sort of thing.
Yeah, that's a component of their program is that they would work with a working group and it could be trustees, it could be people with, EcoCycle has town leaders in Superior, people from our committee as well, so getting kind of a, a broader group of stakeholders that can be part of that working group to work with Excel to determine kind of what are our goals and, and direction for this project, what are we hoping to accomplish?
To develop an action plan.
Uh huh, so creating that action plan. And then they help put some of that resource around, like you said, marketing, promotion, holding the community meetings, those types of things that they'll provide.
Shorten up the town events that you guys ask, so.
Yeah, they'll provide some more of that support that is helpful in promoting these programs.
So I think that's it in a nutshell. They did give us a PowerPoint presentation, but we don't have that available tonight. Should be on, you guys have it, okay. And so the main thing is that the application is due in July. I don't think they've, application makes it sound like you can get turned down, but I don't think they've ever turned down any towns. But I think it's more or less just getting the application filled out. Of course, it'll be an authorized signature on that application.
And they work with Louisville, Erie, Netherlands.
Does the name work so far? I know Cor Collins is doing it.
And they want to have more of that density in a metro area of, if we're all working on it, like you said, like ozone is a regional issue, so if it's something we're all working on and we're all partnering with Excel, we're hopefully making a bigger impact.
And then they were also, if I'm not mistaken, weren't they able to compare us to other similar-sized communities in different parts of the country?
They said they could, yeah, there's other, there's other Partners in Energy programs around the country.
I think the other big one is Minnesota.
That's right.
We also asked if this could lead to some EV consulting help, because that's one thing our committee's been looking into is, where strategically should we be putting EV chargers and so forth around town? Where's the right place to do that? I know Excel is, is digging into that kind of, you know, direction as well. They might be able to hop on with that as well. I don't know. So one of the things that we talked about in our group was that this would be a committee-led effort for the most part. Matt, can you speak to just town staff, kind of role, whether we have resources and any challenges?
Yeah, we don't have anybody on staff who's got a large background in this field. So it'd be, in my mind, a committee-led effort with some support from staff.
And I think that sounds great, committee feels fully comfortable with that.
And I think that's the benefit of the Partners in Energy program is that we're getting that expertise from Excel.
We don't need to have it.
Where we can be the cheerleaders and boots on the ground, but they're really going to bring some of that, what's worked well in other communities, that expertise that would be what we would be paying a consultant for or something like that.
So in terms of logistics and implementing, so what do we need to actually, this is a formal item for the board to consider whether or not to adopt participating in this, or we need to just kind of reach out to Excel and say, hey, we're interested in the Partners in Energy?
Yeah, I think the board feels comfortable with it. I think we would need any formal action by the board to participate in the program.
So, yeah, I think what we need, wanted from you guys was the, logistically, how do we sign off on the application? But if it sounds like something that's good and you think we should be working on, then, you know, we can move forward with the application process, figure out who on our side might be kind of the champion for it. And then working with Excel, provide you guys updates on what the actual plan might be.
Yeah, that's it. Yeah, we would fill out the application, you guys would sign it.
I think it should definitely be this.
Agreed.
Want to welcome Jonathan and Lisa to join us during the meeting here. I think that concludes the two main action items that we wanted to discuss. Is there anything else you want to talk to the committee now or anything else we should be putting on our radar for this year?
I'll give you a pet peeve of mine. We're reviewing the pond maintenance contract later today and, you know, Patrick Hammer is reaching out to the contractor to understand, you know, the algae blooms that we have, how much of that's naturally driven versus runoff from car washes? It's a simple question, you know, how many people that are aware of the phosphate impact on our ponds and streams in terms of algae blooms, you know, in, in our water consumption. It's remarkably low relative to our neighbors. Part of that, a large part of that is car washes. I've got a filthy car, but I go to a good car, you know, place to wash it. I'm just curious, you know, if it's something that we can at least alert people to the impact of phosphate free as, as an alternative when it comes to washing stuff in driveways. And Patrick hasn't, hasn't been able to find out, you know, what else are the algae blooms that we have here in town? What is the underlying reason? We don't quite know, so.
Interesting, hadn't had that come up.
I was going to say that was not on our, not on our topic list, but.
Yeah, the state of Washington runs phosphate free because of the runoff issue with the lakes and streams and stuff like that, so we obviously don't have any water sheds. And Washington, but at the same time, you know, suffer from the algae impact.
So it's phosphate is in the soaps?
Yeah, yeah, so, you know, like the dishwasher detergent you use, Costco went phosphate-free all theirs just a couple of years ago. A lot, a lot of this was driven by the state of Washington and rippled throughout the country, but, you know, a lot of the soaps still have phosphates in them because they work really well for clean. But they have, they're good for breeding algae.
Interesting.
Did Karen have any info about how many people attended the hazardous waste? You got any of that? Or is it too soon?
Yeah, that's too soon.
We will, though.
It was very well attended for how cold it was that day, but, and everyone was very appreciative. But I don't have exact numbers.
Even snow.
I mean, it's hard because back to that information push, you know, that was what, last Saturday, is that right? I think on Sunday, somebody posted on one of the community boards, like, where do I take my batteries? And I'm like, God, are you kidding me?
Yesterday.
Yesterday, it's like, I've been, I think they've been to like three or four different places. Like, can you take me? I'm like, why don't you just look at Charm? Because literally, that's one of the best resources that we all have. We have a page on the town website that has tons of information about anything you want, but in terms of like recycling.
Charm is nice, if you just like, put in what you want to recycle, they'll tell you where to do it.
Just type in the name, what do you need to do? And just funny how even just that basic thing, people don't want to look at that or use it or just aren't familiar with it. I don't know, it's, it's quite amusing.
Funny timing, today I wrote the monthly article for Rock Creek Living and it's going to come out in June, but I wrote it about, so for those of you who missed the April drop-off, you don't want to have it sitting there all year, you can use Charm, use the hazardous waste drop-off facility. And then Resource is another one that wasn't listed on the town website, but I think it should be. And because it's, it's a great place to drop off used building materials and other used materials at great prices and the whole reuse component of this one.
I mean, somehow we just got to get, there's so many new community members and I think a lot of it does come down to that. There used to be a different way of distributing and welcoming people to the community, and I know that.
We need a new welcome wagon.
Yeah, in some ways we do, but I don't know, you wonder if you could do it like electronically a bit different because I remember that the chamber, and I don't know if they still do, used to drop off something when you were new to the community when there was wholesale, do they? And it's funny, I remember when I moved here a long time ago, there was a hard piece of paper, so it wasn't, you know, just a flimsy thing, that had all of the resources on it. This was really when internet was still kind of basic, so, you know, there were lots of websites and you couldn't just put it up on the website referred to, but it's kind of strange that people just don't go looking for the information as soon it doesn't exist.
I'm sorry, point, it might be worth visiting with, with. That's a good point, it might be worth visiting with, with TJ or Tricia, just to see, what are they putting in that packet? Because I've, it's been a year or two since I've seen the packets, but yeah, what is going in there? Are there things that could be added to educate folks about all the resources that are available, really, year-round?
I mean, to be, and, and I guess to that end, I'm wondering if we could do like a little welcome wagon tab on the town website, because if you didn't get the information, or you're new, it's all in one place as well.
Or if you lost it.
Yeah, and it's not that it's not on the website, but just trying to kind of cater to some basic needs.
Town website has come a long way.
It has, I think it's really, because I feel bad cutting it down, because it's not the...
Much easier to navigate, and there's a lot of good, a lot of good information.
It's really the users of it that are the issue.
On the hard-to-recycle stuff for next year, we may be able to keep it open for another hour or two. So I don't know if there's a cutoff, but, I mean, I know that I just couldn't, we had other stuff happening, and by the time I realized I could see the five or six cars queue up, and it was 10 minutes to 12, I said, you know what?
I think the hours are set by EcoCycle.
It's just a second, can't extend.
I mean, I was there the whole time, I mean, it ebbed and flowed, I mean, and we were going pretty hard from nine to 10, and then it kind of quieted down from 10 to 11, and clearly, the last-minute folks rolled it out at 11:30.
Right.
And then we just closed the gates, but it seemed like, it wasn't like half Indiana was lined with cars at 11:45.
I was gonna say, last year, the weather was a lot nicer, and the lines were a lot longer.
Yeah.
But you do wonder, like, could you do it from 11:00 to 2:00 instead?
Yeah, I just, yeah, there it is.
Yeah.
All those Dan kids' morning activities that are...
Anything else?
That's it.
Great, good luck. Thank you very much.
Can someone tell me, what's happening with the creek over there? There's no creek. There's no water, what happened?
Yeah, when the, I'll give you an update. So when the 2013 floods came through, it fractured the creek in that area into four different streams, basically, and from the one into four. And so it's bringing it back into one stream and making improvements in addition to that, where there's a lot of vegetation in there, this was a creek habitat, so that was removed. Creek's been moved back into one stream, there's been drop structures that have been put in there to make it... And we're getting, the goal is to make it more pedestrian-friendly and usable. And so the, and then the concrete, the path, the trail that was there, it was soft trail, and now that's concrete, all the way from McAsland to US 36. That's been poured, and the creek's been re-aligned into one stream, drop structures are in. So in the next month, we'll start adding vegetation back in, shrubs and trees. And by the end of May, we should have a brand-new creek and trail, and hopefully it'll be a lot more pedestrian-friendly than it was. The way it was, you'd risk your life to go down there, you know, some of the trees that were down in there, so it should be a lot better now, so.
So that could be like hidden in a conduit or something anywhere, right?
No, huh, no. There'll be...
Homers, you know.
There'll be some pedestrian bridges, actually, over it, and then some little water crossing points at it, too. So it should be a really nice experience. Is the bike hack back open yet? It is not. We, the path, it still needs a little time to set up, and we're talking about whether we want pedestrians down in there once it's set up, because there's still the equipment down in there with the trees and shrubs and landscaping that's going in. So we're talking about just keeping it closed until something's done. So somewhat permanent? End of May.
All right.
Thanks, everybody.
That's all I got.
Great. Well, welcome to Superior, and we appreciate your wanting to get involved with, with one of our committees and commissions so, so soon in your residency, so appreciate that.
Open space is a little new, we had parks mostly in Texas, and so...
Yes.
So it's fascinating, the miles of trails are kind of fascinating that they exist and the use they get, so it's, it's been of interest since I got here.
Great.
We spent a few years, no, a few months up at the top of the hill, kind of in a temporary office at Key Bank, and that would be our afternoon meetings, we'd go wander the trails and meet the cows and rattlesnakes and things, so. Really liked that. But now we're back in Lewisville office.
Good, okay. Well, I'll open it up to fellow board members who might have a few questions for you.
Sure.
So I'll start. What, thank you for applying, what, what about, you're applying for ProSTAC, correct?
ProSTAC, yes.
And what about ProSTAC as a committee interested you, and?
Well, so I would say that I've always stayed busy enough at work, that I've never been, would I say politically-minded? But, you know, certainly community-minded, and this is a nice community, it's time to get involved. And the outdoor stuff, you know, the kids love the pools and the swim team and the parks and the open space, and I do, I've heard just a bit from Corbett, his experience on it. Just seems like a fascinating thing, and I think I heard that we're either close to or have open trails from Golden to Boulder. You know, that's just, that's fascinating to me, so. That's simple.
So first, I wanted to ask if you've attended any of the ProSTAC meetings?
I have not.
Okay. And then what would be the big changes that you would like to see if you joined the committee?
So I don't, I don't know that I would push for big changes, right?
And maybe big was a misnomer, but...
So, you know, we come from a place where this, for example, the community pools are open a little bit longer. And so I think there's some opportunity, you know, my kids are dying to swim longer than just the summer session. So, you know, that'd be the kind of stuff that I talk about, just more use, getting more people out. I'm, I spent a lot of time in Phoenix with my previous job, and there's, there's tons of what I call urban hiking there, and those trails get used all the time, and I think some of that same, just getting people out and making things accessible and places that people want to go. I don't know that, I see a lot of stuff that really I'd want to change, other than keep doing what you're doing and can, you know, encourage people to get out.
Thank you for applying, greatly appreciated. One of the most important things with our committees is being able to actually attend, so you can be there to participate and contribute. ProSTAC meets the third Monday, or third Wednesday, sorry, of every month at 7:00. Do you have any conflicts that would prevent you from attending the meetings regularly?
My work travels pretty sporadic lately, you never know what would pop up, but usually I plan that well ahead. We went through a period of flight tests, say, a year ago, a year and a half ago, where I was gone for a chunk of time, but I think I'd know that well ahead. We probably have some of that coming up in two years, it could get busy again, but in my immediate future, there's none of that. There's baseball coachings and swim team and basketball, and, you know, I can see in everybody's eyes, they have all those same things. But no, I don't have standing things on that particular day that I think would stand in my way.
Great, thanks.
Anyone else? Okay, Will, we appreciate your answers. I'll do the final question, which I have to ask every applicant, and that is, do you have any potentials for conflict of interest, such as you have a side business designing parks or something like that, that somehow might benefit?
No, I have a full-time job designing spacecraft, and, and that keeps me busy and the kids outside. So no, I don't have anything else.
Okay, very good. Very good.
Any other questions, anything else I can?
That is it, and we will be, you know, we'll be acting on this at a future meeting.
All right.
So, thank you.
Karen was great, a big help in getting me here, so thank you for that, and I appreciate it. Let me know if there's anything I can do.
Great, we appreciate it. The whole meeting is very interesting, so you're welcome, you're welcome to stay for all of it, or you're welcome to...
I'm gonna stay till the end of Boy Scouts, and then I have to run.
Okay, thanks. All right, that concludes our item for the work session, so we will adjourn the work session, and we will be back at 7:00. So we'll have awkward staring here for the next five minutes.